Backhill, here. Mr. Campiani?
Here.
Mrs. Intihar?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Knicker?
Here.
Mr. Broman?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Johnson, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending this special meeting. It's good to see everybody here. I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules so that we can have some freer discussion and question asking tonight. Is there such a motion?
Go move.
Moved by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. We're in suspended rule state. And just for the sake of those of you who are here or who are listening on TV, the whole purpose of this meeting has one topic, and that is our Jefferson and Capitol facilities planning that we're talking about. And we're going to have some discussion about three different parts of it. Little bit of review on the exit survey, a little bit of clarification perhaps there. But most of it will be looking at new design concepts and also some financing options. So just so that everybody's clear, there's no decisions we're going to be making tonight, no action we're going to be taking tonight. It's really more about getting all of the pieces of information together that have been worked on in separate committees, and now for the sake of the whole board to start pulling it all together comprehensively. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Harrison, you can start leading us through.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Good evening, board members. I did, would like to start tonight by, first of all, spending just a few minutes, or whatever time the board wishes, having some follow-up conversation on the results of the community survey. You know, at the last board meeting, we had a full report given to us by representatives, Dr. Gada from Accra. And now I know each of you have had the opportunity to review and read the lengthy report that is there with a lot of detail and analysis behind the presentation that he shared that evening. What I would like to just take a minute and summarize what I believe, from my perspective, what I heard from the survey, a lot of it was shared that evening, and certainly then give board members opportunities either to agree, disagree, comment, whatever your thoughts are about what I interpreted, you know, from the survey results. First and foremost, the survey absolutely confirmed, and you saw in the data, that the community is very happy with the excellent education their children received in this community. So, I mean, that was an overwhelming theme, and it actually played into, you know, a support for some facility improvements as well. And there's some, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Some other key factors that I believe came out of the survey was, one, the community was very clear about prioritizing financial expenditures that improve student experiences, that decisions have to be made that directly impact students, and whether it's a facility, whether it's programming, whatever it is, you know, that is where the community sits and why they hence support the excellent public education that goes on in District 200. Another key, couple key items, the safe and secure environment was one of the key aspects that came through. The community obviously is very supportive of that, wants to make sure that we continue to use our resources to ensure that all of our schools, you know, remain safe and secure learning environment for kids. Cost was a key factor. There's no doubt that looking at the least costly situations as we make decisions on facilities in particular is very important. And in fact, there was even a reference to that priorities go into student programming and teacher development and so on like that, over some other operational things. But in this particular case, also in the facilities questions, there was a clear indication that cost is important. And, you know, there's program-driven solutions too. That was another theme that was very evident. And if you have the reports with you, if you look on page 17, there's four main areas. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, for the audience this evening as well as for board members. On the bottom of page 17, there's four key things. One of them is providing the safety and security for students, creating an appropriate learning environment, accommodating students with disabilities, and finally, having an innovative forward-thinking approach to public education. So those were difference makers when it came to the community on their support, on decisions that we made and you make as a Board of Education. So I just want to reinforce those key items, and I think as we begin the discussion looking at facility options, I think it's very important to keep this information in mind. You know, when we come back and we get to some decision points, it's, that's why we did the survey, you know, to, and as we move forward and make a decision on where we head with this, I think it's critical that we, you know, pay attention to what the community's telling us and make those decisions accordingly. So that's my thoughts, that's my summary. I'm certainly more than willing to, you know, entertain any questions, comments, maybe each of you might have some thoughts you want to share. If not, you know, we obviously have a lot of information we want to break forward here tonight. The other two items, it's listed on the agenda, but certainly want to provide some time for some feedback on the survey.
And we have suspended the rules, so just feel free to jump in, don't wait to be recognized.
Question with an answer.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, I was listening to it over the phone because I wasn't able to be here in person. And one comment that really struck me was Ken's in relation to something that the presenter said, where he talked about how, what the survey really gave us was an idea of what the values that the community holds and what's important to them. And Ken made the point that, you know, teaching and instruction is important to them, but the program is important. And in this particular case, for Jefferson School, the facility is critical to the program. So while many of our other renovations or builds or whatever have been based around the need of just renovating, updating, refreshing, as well as, as well as program, well, they have them programmed, but this more than any of them, we just have the wrong facility for what those kids need. And I guess that's what came through to me, is that really, that is a critical piece. And clearly, instruction and program is important to the community, so understanding how that facility links to that, I think, is key.
I think you're right. I wanted things, and maybe just to summarize what you're trying to, Jefferson is a very, as we all know, a very unique school. It is not a typical elementary, middle school, or high school. It is a very targeted learning environment for some of our most fragile and needy students that are three and four-year-old in the community. Mandated by state and federal government, the programming that's needed there, and we have a very specific population of students that have those early learning needs, that we need to design a facility to meet those needs. And that's the difference.
Yeah.
I think that's what, I think that's what Ken was getting at, if I remember your comments correctly, and, you know, so this one is unique. I, no, I think in reference to like Hubble, when Hubble's our most recent building, that was program-driven and designed that way. However, it is a middle school.
Since I've been on this board, we have not done a project that has not been program-driven. It was very specific in the high schools and in Hubble, that the program was what drove the facility. It wasn't just a big box to house kids to make seats. You know, so, so I mean, I would, I would say that this board has always been about a program-driven facility and program-driven, just the way we do our business is all program-driven.
And I would agree with that, and I'm not trying to say that that wasn't the case, but the impetus for a lot of the others was the fact that the buildings had aged and needed work. And in the, in the scenario-
Well, they also ignored the program.
Well, right. But, but they also just structurally needed work as well. And so in the, in the doing of it, the program was key. Here, it's just really, really the wrong facility. And that's all the point I'm trying to make, is it's a little difference in nuance, I think.
We're staying consistent in what we're doing, and especially in this case.
Any other comments?
Okay. You know, if there's no further discussion on that, I assume that I'll just take that assumption that, you know, the summary of that information is pretty clear, and I think, you know, we all heard the reports and read the reports, and I think the message is clear. So if we move on to the second point of the discussion here this evening, is, is to bring forth some changes to the original design that we had put out to the community, that we shared through four community forums, that we put in a publication, that we sent out and asked for feedback on. So we've taken that feedback from the four forums, we have taken the feedback from the community survey. Staff and Mr. Broman's been directly involved in this as a board representative in the Jefferson Core Team meetings. We have been working with Leggett Architects over the last few weeks, coming up with some changes to the concept to focus on a standalone school at that site, and to take away the administrative offices and the other scenarios that we're, we were considering, and to focus specifically on the school at that site, and to take into account some of the feedback that we received, you know, through the process over the last few months. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Rosin, who is representative here this evening from Leggett Architects, and I'm going to let him walk through the work that the Jefferson Core Team's been doing, and the staff at Jefferson, and, and our architects. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to work with the, with the staff and the administration to again, be able to help develop the concepts for, for Jefferson and be able to further that effort. We've been involved with Jefferson for a long time, and I'm always amazed when I work with the staff there, regardless of the facility, regardless of the space, or whatever day you're there, the dedication that everybody shows in that building, and the focus and the energy is just amazing. No matter what time of day you're there, at the end of the day, all the staff are just as energetic and enthusiastic as they are at the beginning of the day. And Paul and I have visited the school various times during the day. We've got a tour of the learning spaces, the gardens, the, we've watched the flow of parking, we've watched how the entry sequence works, to really try to get an understanding of how this early childhood center is different from others, and then more importantly, how is it different than other school buildings? The effort really started out with a, looking at building tours, and we probably looked at five different facilities, walked the facilities, talked to the users of the buildings, and tried to get a good handle on what are lessons learned, and what are the things that they did in their building right, that we want to make sure we can replicate, what are the things that they learned in the process, and what are the things that they took out of their program that they found out later wasn't, wasn't really a good idea, that they needed to consider those things again. We also worked closely with the staff after school a couple days. The image on the right-hand side shows one of our classroom design spreads. We worked closely with them to truly understand what are the activities that students are going to follow during the day, how many aides are in the room, what kind of help, what kind of equipment is needed. We even worked with them on creating small models of the classrooms to try to get a good understanding of the changing activities, and then the changing needs based on the type of students that are in the building. So it's been a lot of fun developing that with them. And I'm really going to focus on, just very briefly to update you on the previous concept diagram, the community feedback, a little focus on the program, we'll spend a little bit more time then on the updated design options to show where the work we've been doing. And we'll want to remember to cover budget schedules, are very important items as well. The original design concept really focused on, was very much driven by the program, driven by the needs of the district. And interestingly, the, we, committee really worked on behalf of the community as we saw the community needs. So the, there's a lot of focus put, for instance, on parking. We understood that the parking and the flow of traffic on Hazelton is important, the managing things such as being good neighbors from a standpoint of the height and scale of the building. And so this plan developed from that, was really focusing also on the student to ensure the shortest possible entry distances to get from the bus drive into the classroom. We spent a lot of time on that, because we measured their current walk into their, into their building, to get out of the, you know, a cold brisk morning, how do you, how quickly, how many steps is it to get into the building for, for a young student? So this plan was developed around that idea. It also had an option for a second floor administrative area, which also brought additional parking. So all of that was accommodated onsite with the idea of being, you know, focusing on being good neighbors. The building, classroom module, kind of the neighborhood within the building, was developed on this, basically a four-classroom module, which came out of some of the workshops that we've done with staff. And we worked with them to mock up, based on the walkthroughs and the lessons learned, the things that we saw, what are the activities that happen in the classroom, how is this different than other spaces? They came up with some really creative ideas, and these are all the different activities and zones that would potentially happen in one of these learning spaces. I think it's very important to start with that basic building block as the early learning community, to really understand what, how to make the building the next step up beyond other facilities that are out there, as well as to find the things that we really felt worked well. Some of the buildings that we, we saw didn't have a regular-shaped classroom. So one of the things here that the staff wanted to look at is, how do we create some of those nooks and crannies that become private learning spaces where students can feel comfortable, and yet they're open and flexible? So this concept starts to look at a literacy area, literacy corner, writing, fine motor areas that are more open, table activities for, for students to work in groups, space for music, space for math, and all the math manipulatives that come along with that. Storage that's, of course, every staff would love their own storage area. This is, this represents a shared storage space. Toilet facilities are critical at this age to make sure that the right things are learned, but also that effort does not distract from the time for education, because when you start looking at the student's day and the number of minutes that they're there, everything has to be as efficient as possible to maximize their time. And this is really a creative component, is we're calling the integrated therapy room, which is a shared space between any two classrooms as well as accessible from the hallway. That integrated therapy is one of those lessons learned, is putting space in a room. Oftentimes, you're criticized, well, the classrooms are too big, but we don't have enough flexible space outside the room. If you try to make one room a little bit larger to address a program that you know is going to be in there, three or four years later, that program's no longer there, no longer required, the space is better off in this other room. And so this integrated therapy space will allow a flexible wall between both classrooms as well as the hallway, so that can overlight the building when you just create that room to be used a variety of different ways. But most important is the idea of trying to push the therapy into the classroom, so students aren't leaving the room to get additional help for a speech therapist. They can have right there inside the classroom. Simply by moving a movable wall, that becomes part of the room, so students feel that they're, they're part of the classroom, they're not being pulled out for a special activity. These are some of the examples of the multiple diagrams and tools that we use to work with staff. So moving forward, then, we start to think, well, what's program-driven really mean? And with the multiple forums, the four different forums with the community, and then the survey that Dr. Harris presented, the community feedback, and after report, just from the architect's view, some of the things that we saw that were on here was the, was clear community support for the program-driven element. Without the administrative offices, what does that do to the site? What changes potentially would happen without that, that future or possibility of adding administration centers simultaneously? Cost was something that we heard, architecturally, what are, how can the design be respectful of limited cost and yet still focus on educational needs of the students and the learning environment? Other things was the physical size of spaces. We heard both sides, don't, don't make the things, the rooms so big and be so careful on square footage if the costs go up. We also heard, be aware of the changing programs, changing needs in the future, and let's make sure we don't shorten the rooms. And the large motor spaces and the distance to get to those spaces was critical. We still heard the other thing, safety, security, the bus drop-off, the outdoor learning space is a sensory garden. All those things remain to be important. And, and then looking for opportunity to maximize the footprint of the open space on the site, which means limit the footprint of the building itself. So with those tools in mind, we studied the program a little bit further. Some of the key things here that we want to point out, the basic building program would have 18 classroom spaces. We'll talk a little bit about capacity and use. We're also developing an at-risk classroom and diagnostic classroom. So these are spaces that are critical to the program as it's being run today, and needs to be run in the future for Jefferson. Those are specific spaces. We also have designated teaching or testing spaces, as well as spaces for collaboration amongst the teachers and teams of the classroom teacher, the aides, and the specialists that are working with students, so that we understand that as they work with students, they can immediately modify the delivery of a program based on the individual student's needs from day to day, if they have the space to be able to plan and provide that program for the students. We talked about the importance of large motor spaces. Some of the tours that we went on, we saw that the large motor spaces, you know, very soon after construction, were not providing the flexibility that was really needed, and they weren't large enough. So one of the challenges is to find the variety of spaces that, if we walk through the building as, as the bells, we might think of these things as just a hallway, but how do those hallways become large motor activity spaces for the students, so that they have a variety of opportunities close to the classroom for large motor activities? So we'll talk a little bit about that in the plan. And then, you know, just like any elementary school, the district operates, there's a lot of those student services spaces that, if they're not provided the right size, it will impact the operation of the school long-term. So we've gone through and studied those. The program area of usable program space is just over 44,000 square feet, which then, when you add in the, all the other spaces, the circulation, the walls, you end up with a building of about 63,000 square feet, 62,800 square feet. The, how does that compare to other uses? So the, let's talk about the current Jefferson provides, during a full day, serves 289 students, and most of those spaces are for AM and PM usage. That represents about 91 square feet per student. If we wanted to compare that to a, a building that didn't have the special education needs that Jefferson has, you could run a program serving 432 students during a full day, in other words, half in the morning, half in the afternoon, utilizing space at 61 square feet per student. And that's really in there not to suggest that you could do that at Jefferson, but as a number to compare to maybe a tuition-based program. Waiting list with the number in there roughly, if you added the waiting list, it would serve about 400 students. So the facility at 62,000 square feet would have a program capacity based on the special education ratio, one-third, two-third, we can serve in a one-day 476 students, which represents 132 square feet per student. So that's an increase from the 91 square feet per student, and sorely needed to provide the spaces needed for those programs. If you were to compare that to, we'll say, a tuition-based program that runs an AM and a PM program, that same square footage could support 800 students for 79 square feet per student. So it gives you a sense of, when we say program-driven, and we talk about the needs of the students that are at Jefferson, that's, gives you a good handle on how much more space then is needed because of the fewer number of students that are going to be in the rooms, because with some of the, the students comes equipment as well as aides, and there needs to be space provided for those things. As well as, I know a lot of board members have been in these classrooms, there's a lot of material that comes along with the classrooms, a lot of spaces that have manipulatives, a lot of hands-on activities, floor activities, so space is really critical. The other thing that the district's always talked about is that every space, every building and building the district invests in, really needs to be thought of as a long-term asset. So one discussion was, years and years from now, Jefferson's no longer needed as a early learning center, let's assume there was some other use, what, what would the future life of that building be? There was a discussion that, well, if we compared it to an elementary school. So we said, if Jefferson was a future elementary school, it would house 550 students in a full-day program. So it gives you a sense of the scale of the building, what could it accommodate with a different program. That would not have the cafeteria space, it would have the gym space, but it would have the cafeteria space that would be needed. But with the addition of a multipurpose room, that building could serve as its program today, 550 students. So it starts to give you a sense of the impact of program-driven and learning about the activities and the programs at Jefferson today, we're, we're not going to be able to hit the same ratios that you would see with a tuition-based middle, or tuition-based early childhood center or a full-day elementary school that you're programing and you're running in your own. But it gives you a good sense of, of the space, how is it being used, and why. So a brief statement about the overall site, one of the directions that, that we're given, we need to maximize open space, maximize green space, and try to find a way to share that space with the, the community. And so I think it's important to think about the overall site. We need to remember that the current building needs to remain fully operational throughout construction. So one of the things that we talked to staff about recently was the play area adjacent to the parking lot. If we could come up with an alternative space for that during construction, we could push the building, or a construction zone further north. So this diagram shows putting in a temporary play area adjacent to the city sidewalk, a fenced area that would be a safe play area for students, allows us to move the building, the construction zone, from roughly above this location further north, in order to maximize green space to the south of the building. This also shows roughly the area that would be required for construction, including lay-down area, phasing, and room to get equipment around the equipment, or the equipment around the building as it's being built. So this is one of, I think we studied about seven different options that we presented to the committee, and we went through a prioritization for each of the seven options to come back with, what are the top two options that facilitate the desires of the community, the board as a whole, and then more importantly, focus on the program being offered within the building. And of course, each option is a different set of priorities, different set of concepts that look at those priorities a little bit differently. So I'm going to present two options very quickly to give you a sense of the overall concept, and show how they met the, those challenges presented by the program as well as the community. So this light or darker shadow here is the existing building, again, we got to think in terms of that. You can see that by moving the building further north, we've created more open space to the south. The concept, both the concepts, has to take the idea of the outdoor learning space that's was previously thought of as space for Jefferson students, has really been thought of, well, what if that was kind of the side yard element? And although this area would still need to be fenced due to the age of the child, but this could become a community space when it's not being utilized by the programs for Jefferson. And then maximize the adjacent space for, some of the discussion has been Little League as well as flag football, just, a lot of community members said, we use that site right now as our front yard. So is there space available that we can continue to use as our front yard adjacent to your building? And we've found, yes, we can accommodate that by some of those changes. You can see we've reduced significantly the number of parking spaces that are here. If we remove the option for an administrative center, that takes away a lot of that parking. But we still feel that if you're good neighbors, we need to accommodate the parking needs for this facility off-site, so it's not impacting the neighbors' driveways or parkway. Other concepts for this option was to organize the classrooms, keeping the concept of a small module of a classroom, it's kind of a small house, including the four rooms, but then starting to link them together a little bit differently. So here, they're linked together as, as a single, we'll think of it in terms of a single house with, with 12 classroom spaces, and then offsetting these so that there's still a sense of privacy, but then kind of a shared, shared walkway. If we do that on both sides of the building and create a, the garden space directly between those areas, those bars, it creates an outdoor instructional space that, that becomes a private element, that students can be safely within the secure environment during the school day. And then office spaces, mechanical spaces are on one side, the large motor spaces and OTPT spaces are adjacent. Both our plans have these highlighted classrooms, which are thought of as future expansion. We've learned that from each of the building that we've planned for the district, there's always going to be to think about future expansion, how and where, and any systems that can be planned with those thoughts- that can be planned with those thoughts in mind, such as stormwater, or maybe the size of a boiler or electrical service, plan in advance for those since history has shown that each of the buildings has been added on to. Even when we think that it'll never get any further modifications, there's often a need for that. So, that's the plan into these options to be able to provide that ability to expand that program as the needs change for the community. So, this is a, it was a quick summary of the option, we're just simply calling the courtyard option, and the next option is, I'm going to go through that, is the neighborhood option. So, this one we're thinking a little bit differently, rather than two large houses, we're starting to think in terms of three separate neighborhoods that would be organized. This one is furthest to the north, would have an area for future expansion, so it would be a little bit shorter at the beginning. The garden space or the sensory garden, which again is a very specific part of the program, so students are connected with nature, there's spaces for them to be able to get instruction outdoors, and there's some hands-on activities that would happen in these spaces, so they're not, not just a view of nature, it's actually getting out and being part of that. This takes those spaces and makes them a little bit more private, smaller areas. These would also be fenced or gated at the ends of the classroom bars in order to create that security. So, in this case, there's just two of those, slightly smaller than what we saw in the first option. The neighborhoods all connect to kind of a main street or an activity zone. This is one of those spaces that we need to look creatively at to find ways of making those part of the program space so that large motor activities can happen in some of those areas. Oftentimes, this means that there needs to be storage adjacent, and it might be moving from one space to another and back again, utilizing tricycles, utilizing different devices for movement, by simply changing the pattern of the floor, creating other learning stations along those areas. We can convert a corridor, just a normal passing area, into a learning space that can be utilized to meet the needs of the children or, and meet those requirements for large motor. Additionally, we have this block three of space incorporates the large motor, the OTPT, and then device storage. And from our tours, in most of the facilities, there's a lot of places where there were, they needed places to store all that equipment, we're stepping over in several cases, and there was a couple of good examples where pretty much every space, every corner, had a different activity to engage children even though they're just moving through the building. So, that corridor, a couple of the examples we saw, Rex one utilized a corridor as a learning space, so that's important if you look at the corridors in this building. The space identified as six is primarily the student services offices, conference space and the testing. Block four is a media space, which again is very important for flexibility. Oftentimes, you don't think of an early learning center having a library. We're thinking as well of a media center and connections to books and other devices that the students can check out and bring home, so the further that the learning opportunities do become very important at that age. So, this is kind of a neighborhood scheme. The similar concepts are maximizing open space to the south, minimizing parking that wouldn't be necessary except for this facility, and having a very simple layout for buses, and maximizing the waiting area for buses to get those off the street, as well as apparent vehicles to be able to come through, and the car drop-off area in both of the options. And then at distance, that shortening of walk for students into the, into the ability to create the most efficient way of loading and unloading cars and buses for the, they impact both the teachers as well as the flow of traffic and then the students ultimately. So, that's option two, these are the top options that were developed from the survey information we collected, as well as the information that we had collected through our charrettes and through our community meetings or staff meetings. This compares then to the original option, and you can see the, by bringing in the community and listening to their needs and the board priorities and community priorities, we've really taken the design to that next level of being responsive and kind of opening the building where we can to the opportunity for community engagement, community use. Budget, we've talked about the program in detail, taking those square footages and applying the current cost per square foot for those spaces, as well as dollars for demolition of the existing building and development of the site. We're limited on some of the information, we understand that the site is a good site, but we still need to learn more about the, what's underneath the soil borings, manage, to understand a little more about how stormwater will be managed on the site, utilities, all of those things, there's some allowances in there for the unknowns. Really come up to a building that's just under fourteen million dollars of construction costs. After that, then we have contingencies for construction, construction management costs, engineering, architectural costs, bring the building up over the seventeen million dollars, and then we have owner costs, and I'll go through those in a second. Comes up with a total building cost of just over eighteen million, eighteen-point-three million dollars. Owner costs, again, are budgeting for the things that the district may need to spend dollars on that would be impacted specifically for this construction. So, there's a list of them here, they include further investigation into the site, includes some specialty consultants, the construction testing, moving costs, utility connections, all of those things, and there's probably a few items that we don't, we don't have on here that may be needed in the future, and some items here that, as we study this as we go forward, may not be needed. So, we're recommending an allowance of just over a million dollars for those, for those elements. So, that brings us to a budget, recommended budget of eighteen-point-three million dollars. Schedule, based on an April, successful April referendum, we're looking for a time tended to develop the design and documentation. What's critical here is the, that with an April vote, we still have a lot of information to gather and the time that we need to spend with staff in our design committee, so a lot of that work has to happen through the end of April and May, because we're going to lose some of that opportunity come June. And that gives us a chance to begin working close with engineers and whatnot to develop that further collaboration on the design. Bidding, we're looking at early in 2014, January or February, and then construction running from March of 2014 through, for the building, March 2014 to April 2015. So, building completion in April, that allows for startup transition of, as soon as the students leave the existing building, moving furniture over, moving other equipment over that can be brought into the new building, and then begin demolition and site work to be able to complete that work by August of 2015 for occupancy. Beyond that, some of the things that have to happen in the fall anyway, such as landscaping and planting of trees and that type of thing, would happen into the September, October. Strictly outdoor work, the building would be complete and completely punched out before the, before the students could arrive. So, that's again, a rough schedule, both the costs and the schedule have been reviewed by Monday's. John Dory's giving us a first review and has asked us to make some adjustments to the costs. We've done that from the earlier board report, and I feel very confident that this schedule is very achievable with the building that we presented. So, with that, we want to open up the discussion.
Thank you, Patrick, for that summary. I just want to make a couple of comments and, you know, reemphasize a couple of key points here. I think as the Jefferson core team worked on this, and certainly Mr. Bronwyn, you can chime in here too, you were a part of several of those conversations on Mr. Farley and Miss Farley as well, not related, by the way. They were, they both are a part of these discussions, and Mr. Mack has been as well. We certainly were listening, you know, from the community forums, and we were certainly listening from the survey feedback as we continued to make these adjustments. You know, I think there's two concepts here. Essentially, the square footage is the same, there's pluses and minuses in either one, and certainly would entertain the board's thoughts on just some initial impressions and, you know, we are going to have to narrow, you know, it soon, not tonight necessarily, but soon, over the next few weeks, to get a better idea of the concepts. The, if you have specific questions off the program's design, we certainly can go through that. I know we went and took several tours, I know Duane, you were part of those, Jim, part of those, we can certainly weigh in on those. I think the relocation of the playground was another factor. I've had several conversations over the last month and a half with Mike Bedard from the Park District, and he has indicated certainly interested if we would move forward to get into a, into the concept design, you know, after a successful referendum that they, the Park District would partner with us and have that playground being designed in a sensory capacity to meet the needs of the students at the school, as well as to be kind of a satellite program to an existing huge project that they have going on down in the southern part of the community for more ages five to adults. And this would be a more of a satellite program that would help meet the needs of kids at the early ages, birth to five. So, I think they're excited about that possibility, and I've had those conversations as well, and I, they are certainly interested in working with us. They have a lot of expertise that could help us design a pretty important place space there in Century Park, not only for the kids at the school, but also for the community. Yeah, correct. And so, I certainly would, I just want to emphasize a couple of those key points, and certainly open for thoughts and ideas and discussion. And, you know, staff's here to answer questions as well as Mr. Bronwyn.
Got one big question, one little question. On both the designs and in the footprint of the current building that you can see up there, Patrick?
Mm-hmm.
How much further north could you shift it if you wanted to maximize more green space on the south of the lot, or can really, are you on step backs and that's where it is?
Yeah, based on the, I think that construction zone right now is showing how far we can push, push north. If there was an alternative place for parking and buses, we could push maybe another twenty feet, but we can't get too close to the existing buildings to still get equipment around there. And, now, as I said, the construction process and effort needs certain clearances to happen. So, we have pushed considerably north with the, with the addition, or with the new building, as you saw from, if you compare both of these options to the earlier option, where earlier, we're looking at maximizing the utilization of the property to the south, again, before the community input. So, my feeling right now is that we're pushing about as far north as we can in order to maintain safe operation of the existing building for, during construction.
And the brief question was, does staff have a preference?
Staff has not seen, full staff, you know, the Jefferson Design Committee has not seen both of these options as of yet. Stephanie has seen both of the options and is very positive about both of them, but I don't think we call to question which one she preferred.
We, you know, we, yeah, that would be a follow-up, perhaps in between this and the next meeting, I think that is something we would want to do with the staff at Jefferson, is to get some feedback on their thoughts. There's pluses and minuses, my guess is, to either one of the concepts. Another thing on the north end of the property there, to follow up on that question, there is a large easement along Manchester there. We have to be careful, we also, if I'm not mistaken, we have stormwater storage-
Yes.
-that we have to consider off that parking lot. You know, currently on the site, we have very limited parking, and so, we're putting significantly more parking areas, and we'd have stormwater containment issues that we're going to have, and that, we were looking more toward the north end of the property for that, correct? Correct, Patrick?
We're looking at a couple of different options for what would work best for stormwater, because again, the age of the students and the use of that property by a lot of young kids, we're trying to minimize surface water, and so, we're studying options for underground detention. We also want to be able to consider potentially utilizing the earth to heat and cool the buildings, we want to think about a geothermal system, which may be possible as well. So, the site has a lot of great opportunities, and then the proximity to Manchester, how close can we get? I know we've met with a lot of the community members, they were not in support of place space near Manchester because of the speed of the traffic and that there's a bit of a drop-off from the street to the, to the site. So, we have zoned the building to that, with that idea in mind, so this place, by placing the building closer to the center of the site, we think we maximize the open space on either side and then zone kind of the safer spaces further to the south.
If I understand your answer, if I understand your answer to Andy's first question was, the biggest constraint you have in pushing anything further north is really the construction zone, is maintaining a building that's housing students while you're doing the construction?
Exactly.
So, in other words, if you didn't have a building there and you wanted to push it further north, you probably could.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, okay, I wanted to kind of get that clear in my mind and make sure that's exactly what you were saying.
That's why we maintain that footprint on here, because it was something that's brought up also with the community to think about that phasing, because a lot of the neighbors said, just go further north, give us as much place space as possible, you know, but a lot of them weren't thinking about the phasing and how that happened, there was no place for those students in interim, so that building is needed up until the day of the next, the new building is open. Stephanie has some summer program that she'd love to run in the building if it was possible. So, it's really, just like the other buildings, it's a full-time, full-time building in a lot of ways. So, that's, it's critical to think about the phasing of construction. Other thoughts?
Um, you know, I think we're going to just bow to whatever the staff and Stephanie think is the best usage, because they live it every day. One minor thing is just the future expansion, one on the neighborhood version, off the top of my head, I would possibly put it over on the left-hand side so you have more green space to play and make that a full, you know, what I'm saying?
Oh.
We did study that, there's been a lot of time thinking about where, where would that space go, what would be best, so we had, ideally, would you shorten two of these wings by two rooms, but that idea of building in multiple places in one option really seemed to consolidate as best we could. The other thing that led us to this location, and I, we originally did have it exactly for that reason exactly, is that that would allow us to have more contiguous open space for, for community use. But one of our concerns was, as we talked earlier, travel distances from each classroom to get to large motor and to get to the outdoor play area with these young bodies, that, oh, the movement is very important, how long does it take for students to get to those activities? Because in some cases, large motor periods might go into twenty minutes. So, how long does it take them to get there, to be able to get organized, utilize the space, and then get back to the classroom for the next opportunity? So, that's one of the things that we're, that's one of the big discussions we want to have with staff is, we placed large motor here, we can make a lot of sense to have it next to the outdoor large motor spaces, but based on those travel distances and how important that was in our committee meetings, we also want to investigate, what if that large motor space was in the middle block? Would that create a benefit for students and reduce some of those travel distances? In which case, potentially, this could become that future expansion space, so it's a, it's good input.
And the middle green space of number sixteen, and I guess more to Stephanie, what, how do you envision that to be used? I mean, is that-
The sensory garden.
-like precious land, is that, would you be using that regularly?
Yes. Yes, we would be using that space similar to the space that we have now for the sensory garden, so it would just be broken up and it would be closer to the classroom, so students would be able to go outside and access that learning environment. So, it'd be similar to what we have now at Jefferson, just broken up into two different areas.
Option one, sensory garden.
Yes, option one has a, is one contiguous garden in the middle, it would also be accessible to all students. This, we envisioned, would be broken up into different zones, and with, today, just for a sense of scale, the current sensory garden is here, and there's a fenced area along this, this location, so it's a fraction of the size, but with the spaces there, there's a lot of interesting and hands-on activities that the students can be engaged in. And some of it is, one thing that I keep bringing up in our meetings is the, they have a solar-powered water fountain, you know, where the students is walking by, just hear the water trickling down in a fountain, but if, yes, kids play, as they go over there and start to see it in front of a solar panel, the water stops moving, and if they move out of the way, then the sun's shining there. So, you can see them learning very quickly about the sun being able to power this, this little motor and move water. So, something as simple as that, at that age, really becomes a place for discoveries, a place for the group of students to have reading, to engage them, to talk about nature, to talk about some of the sustainability concepts that are out there. There's a lot of great learning that can happen- There's a lot of great learning that can happen there. One of this option makes it very private and secluded or secret. And we've got, at the sensory garden, you know, it's like a secret place for the students to go. The other one has it accessible from the main, the main activity hall. And as I said, we'd have to be fenced through gate at the back with a little bit more opening. So, this one has more views out to the, to the west. And the west offers some heavily wooded areas today, just nice, nice views there. So, personally, I'm kind of challenged between the two of them. I think there are some good opportunities between both and I'm really excited about presenting both to the staff to have them kind of try them on to see what do they see as positives and negatives between the two options.
Patrick, a couple of questions. The cost of a rule, 18.3 million applies to both the concepts, isn't that correct?
Yes, at this point, the square footages are just about equal between the two options. And then looking at materials, obviously, if you build both of these today, they'd probably cost differently. But at this level, in working with landlords, they feel comfortable with that $185 a square foot for both options.
What is the height of the structures that comprise items six and three and 10? Are they the same height as a classroom or are they taller?
As you, in this option here, the concept is six is, we'll say comparable to a classroom, classroom height. And for reference, we'll take in terms of maybe a 14-foot high, 14, 15-foot high element. As you move into the next element, the media center, mechanical space and the therapy spaces, think of that as being higher, again, maybe 16, 18 feet. And then the large motor spaces, this starts to be a gym elevation height. So, this steps up to, closer to a 26-foot high space. Maybe, maybe a little bit, maybe 24 feet would be better for comparison. So, each one of those elements, as you move further south, grows in scale as you move away from, from Manchester and towards the open space. And you can also envision opportunities for natural light to come into those spaces, so some glass maybe up high and clear story. Opportunities to bring that north light in to the media center, the office spaces and the large motor room. So, we can bring the scale of those elements down through those building materials, but that, those elements kind of step up in elevation as you move, move to the south.
The large motor space is more like a gym-type area, and that's what the intent of the early childhood is for the, you know, therapy and the activity space for OT and PT services.
And my question was to get some sense as to, with the neighbors across the street, would be, you're right, if it was option two versus option one?
That's a good point. On the, to compare that same, those same spaces, these are the elements that would be lower to sixes of those student services. So, this is the element that is at 14 to 16-foot high. Mechanical space would be a little bit, a little bit higher than that, as I had said. And then those larger box spaces are over here. Now, this option allows us to, to have these elements that are closer to Hazelton lower. And then box three, which is the tallest box, being a little bit taller now, it's moved away from Hazelton. So, it's a good observation that this option does push maybe the higher elements further from Hazelton. We did, interesting enough, we did have, one of our options, one of our seven options had this neighborhood's option flipped completely. So that these sensory gardens opened towards Hazelton and it presented an option that appeared to be a lot more respective to the neighbor, respectful to the neighbors by providing more green space. Ultimately, it wasn't really accessible to them and it also had these, these elements were to the west. And so they were completely moved, removed, to your point, moved away from Hazelton. That obviously didn't make it to the, make it past the chopping floor. But the reason, I believe, was the distance to the, those elements for students who were, when we started looking at priorities, distance to bus drive, distance to cars was very important for, for the students', student success. So, we brought those forward with the idea that we would use the architectural elements and that, that scale of each one of those elements to make it something the neighbors would appreciate.
Patrick, go back to that first option. I want you, could you talk a little bit about that, you know, those space ones, the number ones there? You know, those obviously are growth areas, so they really wouldn't be there. Talk about that entry, I know I heard you comment about that as well.
We struggled with the, how to, since this is kind of a, the circular option, this is our circulation, but how do you add on to that type of, of an element? And so we studied variety of different ways to do it. We like this one the best because what it does, it basically allows us to create entry plazas at both of these locations. One that's kind of more of the, for student access during the day. And this almost becomes kind of a night entry plaza for some of these functions that may be used during the evenings with night lock-off, as you do in all your buildings. And then be available for, for expansion with one being potentially needed for expansion at one point in time. And then the other one being needed for expansion at some future date. The other option, where all four together, it almost forces to build all four additional spaces at one time. What I like about this is it does give you that opportunity that, again, that entry-exit sequence is so important to successful operation of building. And if you imagine that that movement is happening four times a day and making that experience positive for the students is really critical. And right now, the staff that work with the students are waiting oftentimes in a long, narrow hallway with the students kind of, until their bus gets there, until their, their car arrives. This potentially could create plazas between now and the time that they're needed for future expansion. The students could be very welcome in plazas that are protected from, from the wind and it could be nice spaces for, for the students to wait for those rides in the proper kind of weather.
I'm confused, but are, so that that's future?
Future expansion. So, what we're visiting is that day one, what that would look like is a, this would be a, potentially a glass entry wall with plaza and maybe some benches. And by plaza, I'm saying it might be a brick pavers on the ground. Future expansion, those brick pavers would be removed and walls would go up in their place to create two additional learning spaces.
I'm sure this is all in the design, but I don't know why, I was thinking that most students, I guess, I guess most students could, do get there by bus, is that right? Versus?
Yes, as I say, I would say, oh, car versus buses, typically morning is more buses, afternoon is more cars. Oh, right? Am I backwards? Okay, so morning is more cars, drop-off, and buses more in the afternoon. Basically, as the students are, get older, their parents kind of trust the bus process maybe a little bit more. But regardless, the, the student experience is the same. They're met at the door, the bus or the car, and they're, they're walked in. And every, the staff that does is amazing, they're, they walk out and they're holding two hands and walk those students in. And as soon as they get them into a safe location in the building or transfer them to another staff member, they go back and meet the next car. So, it was made very clear to us, the longer you make that walk, the longer those cars sit there and the more educational time we lose during the, the school day.
So, one car, one car entrance done is adequate? Oh, there's two, I see, there's another one in the back?
Cars would come in here, staged through this, this circle, and then they would unload along this line here. So, we're currently, currently unloading, I think it's eight, eight cars at a time are unloaded. And we would, in this plan here, I think it was 12 or 14 cars would be able to unload.
So, there's a difference in the back there as well, so I just think you could get into the back there.
Correct. They can enter here, they can enter here, they can enter Hazelton, this location here. And depending how these are detailed, they potentially can enter two locations here, two locations here as well. So, but that really became, once we actually sat down and thought through the minutes a day that the students are in the building, that really became a higher priority in a lot of ways. When we started thinking about the layout of the building and efficient operation of the building.
One of the differences in, in an early childhood center with children three and four years old is, and when it went into these designs, was they're supervised 100% of the time. There's, it's constant. And so, you know, that's why we have multiple entrances with short accesses, I mean, little steps, you know, with little legs. And it is much different than in elementary. It's just totally different situation. And we, we observed that, we went and visited the other locations and noticed the multiple entry points that were designed depending on the site. They were all a little different, but they did have several entrance points in each one of the buildings. And separating the cars and the buses was always important.
And when we asked some of them, what would you have done differently, to a T, they all talked about capacity of the parking area. Because they now have more specials in the building than they had anticipated, as well as additional space for buses. Because they hadn't envisioned that they would really have the number of buses that they, they currently have. And the other one was, was space for, in a large motor, but also specials in the building, right, integrated therapy. Because they were, they were running out of space for one-on-one and the two-on-one therapy and they were doing it in hallways. And that hallway may have been designed as part of their large motor, so now the large motor has to move elsewhere. So, it was this idea of both designing spaces to be flexible, but then also provide every space that have multiple uses that as needs change over time.
And you know what, that's what I wanted to ask about the integrated therapy in the classrooms. It, so, is it all done according to these designs in the classroom? Or do we have the flexibility to have a space if you decide, you know what, we really need to bring all of the children to some common place, that that works better? Is there enough space in these designs?
Stephanie, can you talk a little bit about the idea of integrative, integration of therapy into the classroom?
Sure. Right now, therapy is within the classroom in a larger group setting. So, we would use any of those common spaces where, like, let's say a speech and language pathologist would be serving all the students in the classroom with a lesson. So, there are some large group lessons. And then for the integrated therapy, one of the models that we talked about with, there would be a divider that you could either have open area depending on the group. But if a child really had a lot of distractions, you would also have the availability to block that area off. So, there would be minimal distractions. So, there's a lot of flexibility of how they provide their services based on the needs of the students. So, some would be within the classroom, some would be open in the integrated therapy area. And then some would be where you could actually close off that therapy for students that do have minimal attention or has a great deal of distractions.
You know, another key component with these therapy areas and the diagnostic areas, and Stephanie certainly jumped in here if I don't say this exactly correct. When children enter our school district at three years old, you know, there's a significant amount of initial diagnostic work and assessment and observation. And, and all of those things are so important. When we went and visited, I remember specifically even Oswego, and when we visited there and when we visited, maybe it was down in Lenox. I remember them talking about, that was their shortsightedness, that they, they did not allocate enough space for those OTPT speech, all of those. It's not only the ongoing students, it's the diagnostic work that goes on. And you see, we did incorporate that in here, that, that early assessment. Because it's really the first time, you know, as from the school district, we're making a lot of judgments early on with the students as they enter our school district with these very unique needs. So, I'd certainly add on to that or, you know, if I missed anything there.
But in other words, is there room for a separate space? Should you want to do that in its own space, not within a classroom?
Yes, we have, we have a separate diagnostic classroom.
That's an administration.
That has that ability to view, the only thing I would add to what Dr. Harris says, the, it's a student experience, but it's also that, that parent experience. That's their, really their first introduction to their school district, sometimes their first introduction to these special needs that their child is going to have. And there's a lot of questions and the need to witness and see what's going on. Because, so that can happen in a diagnostic classroom, it can also happen from the integrated therapy room, could very well be an observation room for two hours. You know, and then give them a speech therapy a half hour later. So, we're studying the type of wall. And it's not like an accordion partition, it's actually a, either a pivot wall or a roll-away wall. That, we looked at several products that are safe enough for even the kids to move. And so, there's a lot of great products out that will allow for that level of flexibility. What I like about it is it adds space to either room or to neither room, because you can open it from the hallway. And it's, it's one of those spaces that I think will help create flexible rooms into the future. The other thing with the integrated therapy was the, it's, as Stephanie pointed out, the idea is that you could ideally offer all those therapies within the classroom, that's ideal. But as we interviewed staff in other buildings, they, they had a hard time doing that. Because their methodology and their teaching style was about needing that separate quieter space. And so I think there's a learning curve also for staff to get used to, how do we integrate, how do we push those therapies into your classroom? And how do we as architects provide the right space, both in the therapy space as well as within some of those little breakout spaces within the classroom itself. And we did see some good examples of that as well when we toured buildings.
And that's kind of why I'm asking it, because I know that way back, you know, those adapted, those flexible spaces was the big thing in other grade levels and other situations. And it ended up not working out so well, I think for the most part, largely because of those types of issues that you're talking about. I, I know at Lincoln School, we had some classrooms originally that had, you know, those partitioned walls, which sounds great. Except that it was difficult to put, you know, chalkboard on or, you know, there, there were other things. So, I know that this is a whole different program that we're talking about. And not to have to take the children from one space to another, you know, makes a lot of sense. But I'm just testing it, testing the logic based upon past, you know, things that have come and gone. Are we coming around again to that thing?
Exactly. Well, this room is a great example, how often does this accordion wall get moved out, right? But the, the point is that the product, studying what's out there to make sure we have flexibility, adaptability versus a compromise. So, now all of a sudden, it's a noisy inaccessible space, it needs to be a flexible space that, that functions regardless of how it's set up. And that's something that we've, we've worked with staff, we've shown them some images of successful installations in a variety of other places. They're excited about it, but it's something that they need an opportunity to work more with us to investigate that further and test it. But we do think it's a way of, of being able to provide that space and then half hour later, move it into the next room, half hour later, make it a private therapy space. And it provides some flexibility for, for staff. And the other element that is really important to that is the collaboration space, space that we're creating for the teams. It's always one of the things we heard, that they don't have enough, they don't have enough of a place to work together and think in terms of kind of staffing with a child or for a child. And that provides, those collaboration spaces provide a space for that to happen. It also will create a larger classroom because some of those, the teacher supplies that are needed for times of the day when the students are not in a room, those will be able to move out of the classroom itself. So, another way of creating a larger classroom without necessarily building a larger classroom.
The, Patrick, thanks a lot for your preparation. I, I think we listened to the community, you did, in terms of design. One of the things I heard at two or all the forums I attended at Jefferson was the playground is sort of locked and back at the school. And the community and the neighbors couldn't take advantage of it, much like they're doing now. I like the fact that you've slid it around to the south side of the, of the building in both of these examples here. And that the community can and the Park District is going to work on a sensory kind of activity place for, for future development in that area as well. The, I, I noticed in one of the slides there, you had LEED certification dollars thrown in there. Are we going to attempt to, to go LEED certification in this building?
That'll be up to the board, we wanted to provide that line item for that opportunity. The system was past construction, the board certainly has gone after that. And we think this building provides a lot of opportunity for that level of energy efficiency, but it hasn't been decided yet.
Okay, but that dollar amount wouldn't necessarily cover saying we're going to build the building under LEED certification standards?
Those, the dollars that were in there are really just the, that's the additional paperwork and things like that, the services that are needed. Our, our goal is still to design to that standard so we get the most energy-efficient building that we can with the, with the dollars that are available. So, we guess, we feel that it's, the construction costs are appropriate to achieve that high level of efficiency. And certainly the material choices, some of those things should be taken into account. It's, it's just whether we want to go through the full certification process and the conditioning. Conditioning is something the district has found value in already anyway. But those are some of those dollar that are under owner costs that would help support that.
Yeah, as you know, that is an additional cost, you know, but, you know, the efficiency component and the, you know, green aspect of the, of the materials and the, and the functioning of the school, which is currently at Hubble, obviously. And I know the board's very familiar with that. We'd have to make that term. have to make that determination if that's something we want to continue to do on this site. And there is additional costs. There is. The, when you talk about the, in the courtyard option, we have the sensory garden and the outside instruction, are there outside entrances to the classrooms that face that?
Yes.
So each of the, so you wouldn't have to go into a hallway or into a common area and then to a common building?
The classrooms are directly adjacent to the sensory gardens, and our vision right now would be able to direct, have direct access.
Go right outside and take advantage of that.
Absolutely.
All right. And then lastly, in terms of parking and water retention, do you gain anything from eliminating or, you can't get away from water retention at all, but if you have pavers in a parking lot, like we did at Hubble in the main, that secondary parking lot?
That's one of the things we'd like to study with the county. The county loves the pavers, but they're not giving much of a credit for use of pavers until they have more time to study them. Actually, the city of Warrenville, the work we did at Hubble, that was one of their sites to kind of study and see what the impact of the permeable pavers is. And that's something we'll work to see how far we can get with those. Typically, they still want us to think of those as being completely impervious, even though they're starting to realize that there's, they do work. It really comes down to long-term maintenance, will they be backed in doubt in order to continue to be permeable into the future? And the county's always hesitant about that, as you learn with the artificial turf, it becomes something that they, takes a long time to bend on some of those elements. We'd certainly go down that pathway and be able to study that option. We know that the district's also looking at different samples on long-term maintenance and how well, how easy is this maintained versus an asphalt lot, and we've seen some positive results there as well.
All right. Thanks.
Patrick, option one, standalone Jefferson, that was one of the early ones that you presented, I guess. What's the square feet on that one?
The standalone, the square footages are about the same between the three options. You're referring to the original option, this one?
Right, yeah.
We're calculating that at about the same 63,000 square feet.
As I'm, thank you, as I'm comparing that to the option one courtyard, it appears in the standalone, original one, there were five early learning communities?
Yes.
And in the option one courtyard, there's six. Was that just sizing issues, I guess?
It really comes back to how we consider a future expansion. So we have two smaller communities because of the expansion area that's highlighted in lighter, lighter color, thus creating kind of two, two half areas.
Okay. And then also, on the original plan, I see there was a district training area, and that's disappeared on the option one courtyard, is that correct?
Correct. That was a space that would be shared, shared training for both the early learning center and district administration services. It was also a space we felt the community would want to use on occasion as well. So, but by, once we removed the administrative area out of the program, it no longer was feasible to maintain that space.
And lastly, as you toured these other facilities, apples-to-apples comparison, same program, same number of students, what were those square footages that you were looking at?
It really varied by the programs that were being offered, as we had a comparative analysis up there. The, as you look at the overall program, I think it's that slide, the simplest way is to go back and study the square feet per student for program capacity, and we're seeing buildings that range between the probably 90 square feet per student, and they were, they ranged up to, up to 120 based on the programs that were being offered. We haven't found an example that exactly matches what you're doing right now at Jefferson. And so that's why we did this comparative analysis, because it's easy to look at another building and say, okay, if that building only offered a tuition-based program or only offered, had programs without the special, then how can we compare square footage? So in that, under the comparative model, we've come very close to some of the other models that we toured to be able to compare them side by side. So total square footage versus number of rooms. The places where we see some differences would be in the large motor spaces because of the success that Jefferson staff has seen utilizing their larger, large motor space. And so that was seen as being very important, and through lessons learned from some of the spaces we visited, to a T, they were looking for greater flexibility for large motor activities. And there's also discussion that the state may change the number of minutes that students need for large motor as well. So being ready and being prepared for that was very important. So I think that's, we're going to be a little bit on the higher side as a result of that and some of the other therapy spaces that are in the building.
Yeah, that's where, if you look at other current facilities that we went and visited, you're right on, Patrick, from what I recall. I know we have a lot of data, and we did a lot of analysis when we were looking at that. The actual classroom space, what we have up there on a classroom, is it 900 square feet, or, no, it's bigger than that?
A thousand.
A thousand?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, a thousand on the typical classroom. That's pretty standard from what we saw. It varied a little bit, you might see some 950s. We saw a couple that were 1100 if I remember correctly, didn't we? So, I mean, that's kind of in the middle, but where the difference in total square footage is in the therapy spaces, the large motor, those areas where we heard what people said, we don't have enough room for this. So that's why we did incorporate that in here to meet our needs. I think too, our program is somewhat unique, and we talked a lot about this already, in that blended feature that we've got that we believe is highly effective for kids and why we have such a success rate that kids move into their home kindergarten classroom. And that's a critical component that is a program-driven issue that we feel is vital. So, I mean, that's a piece of this too. And that's unique. I'm not saying we're the only ones that do it, it's just it's unique. Not everybody does that.
Yeah, at the conclusion of our core meeting that we had in early November, we focused quite a bit of discussion about the square footage per student and to make sure that it could be justified based upon projected uses, projected changes in the law, and lessons learned in other facilities.
Just, I just have two other quick questions. One is, I just want to check, is the footprint of both of these courtyard and neighborhood, basically, that's taking up the same space in terms of grade space? There's no difference between?
Yeah, if you think about the, well, the one option does appear to provide more open space because of the open courtyards, we'll call them, and the neighborhood option, but these, seeing that these would need to be secured because of the student age, then they're comparable to the overall footprint. The space that's outside of that dedicated space for students is about equal.
The space to the south, though, is the same?
Yes, very close to when you overlay these. And you just kind of flip between, between the two of them. They're very, the building's south line is very similar. The configure, I will point out, the configuration of the play area is something that we've developed without getting put yet from the park district. We're excited about some of the, we've studied their materials that are put together for the sensory park, and we think that that whole concept of sharing that space, one of the concerns early on, and the reason why it became kind of a private play area, was the age of the students, the need for that to be available every single morning for students to be utilizing, even in the transitional weather, where students can just, even they can put on coats and get outside for a couple of minutes and do an activity. If that was open to the, to the community, will it be maintained and will be ready for instruction every morning? As soon as we put it on the side yard, that becomes a concern. And so with the park district potentially assisting with maintenance and operation and having a stake in that, as well as the, somebody being responsible to kind of lock that gate at the end of the night, whether that would be whether it's nine o'clock at night or whatever, but it would, it would be kind of that semi, kind of sort of a semi-private. With that side yard, we want to have fence for, again, because of the age of the student, and that should be that open play area. So there is some differences having it on the side yard, but if it opened up a partnership with the, with the park district to expand what's there, I think it's a great opportunity.
Patrick, how big is that space, just so people get a concept there, that to the south end of that property? You recall Paul.
So we're close to the? We're, we're looking at that in acreage, and the simple kind, the entire site is a 10-acre site, and so we're looking at that, that component being someplace about the two to three acres. At one point, we had calculated total open space that didn't include the parking area to be close to four acres. But it's not all contiguous, so I would think the part of the easiest answer is someplace around two and a half, twenty-three acres of space.
Which is pretty, I mean, that's a pretty significant space there compared to what we had, you know, done before when we reconfigured this, so.
And I like that whole concept, kind of, the building opens up and invites the community in to use those spaces versus kind of blocking them out with the earlier option in order to try to keep those more private spaces.
Could you go to this slide again, just to make sure I'm understanding the enrollment? There we go. So I did current enrollment, and then current comparative capacity?
432.
Means?
That's basically, if you eliminate the uniqueness of your program, and if you took the existing spaces and ran a early learning center that didn't have the special education needs to it.
Or even elementary.
Well, the size of the existing rooms, they're a little bit smaller, and so we've knocked those down in that model, like we use 18 square feet per, raising students per classroom. But it really gives us a chance to say that if I had, if I ran a standard early childhood program there, how many students would I be able to accommodate, and then what is the square foot per child in that model? So it kind of tells us that it's, it's low, and again, remember those, that 432 represents morning and afternoon usage, two separate groups of kids coming through.
And with waiting lists, our current waiting list?
Yes. That's not the full waiting list, that's the current population served plus the waiting list equals 400.
So what you're going to build would, how is 476?
The base bid would be accommodate 476 students in a full day operation, so twice a day, so roughly 233 kids in the morning and staying in the afternoon.
And then the one-third, is one-third, two-thirds, one-third regular and two-thirds specialty?
Yes. So it's that idea of adequately work with those students into, I use the word mainstream, it's not technically mainstream, but they're in that integrated space, that's where the one-third, two-third comes from.
So, and Stephanie, you anticipate that this will be enough, of course, and we did get 76 more kids, and now we're at capacity? Is that correct?
We, looking at what the needs are and the projections and our data that we've had, we believe that this would absolutely be enough.
Hold us for 10 years or?
Absolutely.
Well, and it needs to sign too, you know, we have opportunities for expansion that we wouldn't do initially, that, you know, let's say 10 years down the road, we need a couple more classrooms, the possibility to do it is there. And there'd obviously be some conversation about roughing it in and, you know, doing some things initially so it would be an easy addition per classroom or two. You know, we wouldn't have to do both of them, we can just do one if we only need one. So I think there, that was, you know, an opportunity there, that they, you know, Patrick and Paul worked into this, that, you know, we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to do that down the road.
Just to find one more component of capacity, the reason why it's, we're doing, it seems very complicated to think about capacity in the building versus you're used to seeing, what's the capacity of that elementary school? We've come out and did 600 students. It's very difficult here because of the attending on the needs of students that show up, that come into the building. A room that could normally accommodate 20 students may only accommodate 10 because the special needs of those students, the equipment and the additional aides that come in. As we walk through the building and look in, you might, it seems like, well, we're all the kids, because you see adults and equipment, and then you see, oh, there's eight or 10 kids in that classroom. So the normal capacity discussion that we have with the board, this needs to be thought of a little bit differently. So we came up with this concept of a comparative capacity, so that if you took away the program, what would the capacity be? That helps us compare then to other pressures.
Yeah, my only concern was that we make it big enough, and I just really feel like this is, our special ed department is growing and will continue to grow with its reputation and that we, you know, allowing it from. All right. If there's no, I don't want to rush things to you. You have to pay for it, that's the question.
Yeah, that's the next conversation here. Okay, thank you, Patrick, for that.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And I would encourage board members to consider a couple things. One, as you have an opportunity to think more about it, you know, if you have a preference one or two, I mean, some thoughts may come up, please let me know, and that will weigh in. We're definitely going to take these concepts and meet with the Jefferson staff over the next week and a half, and allow them an opportunity to weigh in, because they may think of something that, you know, the rest of us missed, or might end up with a preference, you know, that they may, we may want to come back in a later meeting here soon and suggest why one might be, you know, educationally more appropriate over the other. So we haven't done that yet, wanted to show the board the ideas first before we move back to the staff to get their thoughts on it. And also, you know, if you do need additional information, you know, if something comes up, you know, please let me know, and we'll certainly work with staff and/or with Leggett, and we'll get that put together. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have one more component here this evening, and that, okay, how do we pay for this? And the finance committee has already spent some time over a couple meetings over the last month and a half, looking at some funding options, and we have narrowed it down to a couple things, and both Rosemary and Jim D'Amiani are both on the finance committee. And so, you know, they've had the opportunity to have some, a lot of preview information. I'd like to introduce Bob Lewis from PMB who is here this evening, and he is going to also run through some of the options here on the financing. Before I do that, Mr. Crowe, do you have anything to add upfront, or you want me to turn around over to Bob? All right, very good. So, like I said, I'm going to let him run through a kind of our current debt situation, you know, what it would cost, you know, using a couple different figures here, and we'll talk about funding and how we might be able to do this. So turn over to Bob.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight your financing options for this and for our project. The first page you see here is a numerical table of your debt obligations. The next slide is a graphical illustration which will hopefully help explain it better than perhaps this will, especially for those of you sitting from a distance. The district's current outstanding debt is right here for its referendum debt. Here's its non-referendum debt that's outstanding. And you can see right here in this, let me hear, '23, fiscal year '25, you have substantial decrease in your debt, and that's what we're focusing on. Thank you. And so that's where we're focusing on amortizing the principal. You'll see for several years, the payment is the same because we're doing interest only, because your debt structure increases over time. So the plan was to place the principal for this new project that began roughly 12 years or so out to be paid off after most of your existing debt is paid off. Let's go ahead and look at it and see what that looks like graphically. So the blue bars are the debt service, and debt service is principal and interest payments on your outstanding bonds. The red bars represent your existing and the proposed bonds should the district approve, the district voters approve an $18.3 million referendum. And you can see here in the out years where the bulk of the principal is amortized. We just split it into two, we put $9 million this year, $9 million this year, and that, again, is roughly, you know, 12 years out or so. The average rate that we've assumed was about a 3.6%. That would be, it was conservative when we ran it back in October, rates have improved since then, so it'd be even more conservative today. You know, we assumed also you'd sell it all at one time, looking at your construction schedule, you could perhaps take advantage of some provisions in the tax code which we talked about, the finance committee may split into two issues instead, and financial bonds at even lower interest rate. The next scenario is a The next scenario is a smaller referendum for six-point-seven million, and the reason for the smaller amount is if the district were to, board were to choose to present an option where you were to use the entire CBD grant that you received and this bond issued to cover the size of the project. So your borrowing would be much less. In this case, it would be amortized in just one year additional, right here you can see it. So it's not that much, because you're only adding about seven million dollars in principal. You know, one of the other things we talked about, the finance committee too, is, you know, your debt service is relatively flat for a few years, and then you have these spikes. You know, at some point, maybe there's some discussion about what to do with those increases, but it's really not part of this discussion now. But we wanted to get the principal beyond those payment years, so to minimize the impact of the taxpayer today. So here's a summary. The scenario one provides eighteen million, eighteen-point-three million dollars in proceeds. The estimated payments over time are twenty-six-point-three million dollars, so the difference between that would be roughly eight million dollars in interest that you pay back at the conservative rates that we calculated. The estimated tax rate increase would be a little more than two and a half cents per one hundred dollars of equalized assessed valuation. And again, that's because in the earlier years, we're just increasing and paying interest until the principal's paid off for the district, and then you pay off the principal for these bonds. Well, what's the impact of the taxpayer for that scenario? And for two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, it would be a sixteen-dollar increase over what the debt payment would otherwise be for the outstanding bonds. Twenty-five dollars for three-hundred thousand, thirty-three for four-hundred, forty-two for five-hundred thousand dollars, for a five-hundred thousand dollar home. And again, this is only the impact of this referendum, does not include any increases maybe as a result of the operating rate increases when you, if you choose to take the CPI increase. The second scenario for the six-point-seven million would have a payback of nine-point-four million, that's roughly two-point-seven million dollars in interest. The increase would be about a penny on the tax bill, and the increases for the two, three, four, and five thousand dollar home would be six, nine, twelve, fifteen dollars respectively. That's the sum of my presentation, not quite as interesting as the building, but, but the cost obviously is important. So at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have on the, you know, the structure that we put forth to you today.
Let me just summarize a couple things, and maybe Rosemary or Jim, if you want to jump into, you know, we had a lengthy discussion in committee. One of the things we wanted to show here, if you want to read all the numbers in the chart, that's great, it's all there, but the actual graph show a visual representation of, you know, what our current debt is, and that's for, you know, the building of Longfellow, the high school renovations, as well as Hubble. Just so everybody understands what is involved in those current debt. And if we would add an additional eighteen-point-three, all the way down to six-point-seven, anywhere in between, whatever we choose to do with the ratio, you know, you could figure it out pretty easily, you know, what an additional cost to the taxpayer would be on an annual tax bill. You know, obviously, the amount is not significant, you know, the lower, it's not a huge amount compared to what we've done in the past. It is an additional cost though. And, you know, I know taxpayers are very sensitive to that, and it's something we, you know, we certainly have to consider in the decision-making here. You know, the other component here, and why we put these two scenarios here, certainly could generate any scenario we want, depending on what we'd want to bond, is the use of the capital development fund money. And I know that's a question that, you know, the board needs to decide on. We had lengthy discussions in the finance committee on that issue. You know, my, I have thoughts on that, I'm certainly willing to share them on what we would do there. I think we have some pretty significant needs that we've identified outside of this project for capital development. We have some operating costs that we're concerned about coming up in, I'm anticipating in the near future. We've got fund balance policy that we want to make sure we maintain, so we're not borrowing to make payroll and pay the bills. I would, you know, strongly encourage the board to consider, if we did move forward with building a new facility, we bond the full amount, because we have other needs. And I think those funds could be used for other projects, you know, in the district. That's my opinion and recommendation. However, I'm certainly open to listening to thoughts and ideas on this, and certainly feel free to jump in here, and we had a couple hours of discussion about this in the finance committee.
Yeah, and thank you. And really, the reason we do have this scenario two here is because, I mean, it's well-known we got that capital development money, so it's the obvious question people would ask is, well, if you just put it all towards this, then what would we have to bond and what would it be? But as Dr. Harris said, that taking all of that money would deplete our fund balances beyond what is now our new fund balance policy. There was actually a third scenario that we ran, where we asked Bill to figure out, well, how much of that capital development money could we siphon off and still maintain our fund balance ratio approximately where it should be, not as good as it is now, but still within that limit? And I think it was about three million or so.
Three and a half.
Yeah, three and a half million. But, you know, the effect on the taxpayer was just like about two dollars. So to take that relatively small amount of money off didn't seem to be worth really considering. So basically, this is the all or nothing plan here, is what we've got. Jim, I don't know, do you want to jump in with?
Just, I'm glad you clarified that, because maybe where we came up with these numbers, the six-point-seven million, yeah, we have, there are many dynamics going on here, the least of which is that we, to Dr. Harris's point, we want to make sure we've got money in the fund balance, which complies with the fund balance policy that the board approved, number one. Number two, that prevents us from having to borrow to pay payables and payroll and do those tax warrants, if you will, albeit the interest rates are relatively low on that, but you still borrow the money. The remaining challenges are depending on what happened in Springfield relative to pension plans, and where that will land at this district level. And, you know, that could be anywhere up to a nine-million-dollar number. So we have a lot of dynamics going on relative to this building, and the referendum, and how we most effectively use our money, or the taxpayers' money, as you will, in this district. And so there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen here, but we're looking at every possible scenario to stay in compliance with policy we've established, and to use that rainy day fund to protect the assets, so to speak, and the operating income that we may need relative to running the district. So a lot of discussion on it, and much more to come.
I think too, we have identified other capital issues and other capital needs. I mean, one of the things that we've taken off the table based on, you know, the community feedback was this facility, you know, the Woodland, and, you know, some of our facility. Those issues aren't going away, okay? And the community was pretty clear about, they're not interested in voting yes, therefore, you know, basically, figure out with your existing fund, if you're going to do something, you know, figure it out with your current, yeah, try it, under the operating funds that we already pay. Okay, that, I took that as real clear, you know, message, and I think, you know, that's where we have to go back, you know, as a board and the staff, and try to figure out how can we do those things, renovate or recreate, whatever the case may be, you know, current scenarios, and maybe even seek out some other opportunities that may be available to us in the district, you know, for some of those needs. So anyway, that's where that is, that's just a side note, you know, we've obviously moved away from that, but the reality is, we do need to pay attention to this sometime in the next, in the near future. These other two facilities, this building and Woodland, we've got to do something.
Did the finance committee discuss the paydown of the bonds and the whole, I'm a little uncomfortable with paying interest only unless we're using money to pay down more expensive debt. Is there, you know, is there a reason for that scenario that somebody could explain to the layperson?
The reason for that proposed scenario is because when you look at your debt, you know, taxpayers don't pay just one bond issue, they pay all your bond issues in the aggregate. You can see how your debt over time is already increasing. So you could have amortized principal every single year, but then that would just brought up every year even more than what is already going up. And because your debt pays off, you know, in a relatively short period of time, you know, in twelve years, you have no debt outstanding, and we thought with rates as low as they are today, it made sense to go out and put the principal out here, because you're still borrowing, even at our conservative assumptions, at what was it, three-point-six percent is what we assume, which by historical standards is very low. You know, and if you sold them today, we'd probably be under three percent, but, you know, to be conservative for the taxpayer analysis, we wanted to make sure you use high enough interest rates.
And everything else that we have is higher than that?
Yeah, everything else you have is higher than that, and your call dates on some of those bonds are further into the future. We took advantage of your bonds that are, were callable most recently when we did the refunding earlier this year. In fact, the, these first two years reflect what took place with refunding those outstanding bonds, and also using the five million dollars you received from the Hubble sale to pay down quite a bit of debt these earlier years. So had you not done that, these blue bars would be even higher than the red bars. So, you know, with the combined, the referendum combined with what you did with Hubble, the actually taxpayers would be lower than what they were, would have paid.
We did talk about that, you know, and in terms of whether or not there were other higher interest ones, but the problem is, as he said, it's the call date, so even if you refunded it, you'd have that money just sitting in escrow, essentially not doing anything for you, so why do that? So this is really to try to keep, basically, keep everybody's tax bill as low as possible.
And everybody pays their fair share that way, too.
Right, that's what I was going to say. We've had this discussion before around this table, that, you know, you're building a facility not just for the people now, but for the people ten, fifteen years from now, and so everybody pays the way. But I agree, I had some concerns, just the concept that all the principal is at the end, sounds like, you know, a balloon mortgage or something, you know, that everybody intuitively doesn't like to do. But if you look at actually, in those last couple years, the total debt is way lower than what it is now, so.
And the other thing we talked about is you put principal in these earlier years, you're essentially absorbing and moving beyond the savings of the taxpayers who are going to experience from having done the Hubble payoff. And the other thing we talked about is, in these years, you have a lot of bonds that become callable, so there's an option to refund those bonds to reduce the payments, or perhaps take some of that principal and move it out into here, they flatten out that payment and keep it at twenty million dollars or something like that, which is more akin to what people are used to with a home mortgage or car payment, those stay the same, they don't increase over time. So, but that's a discussion for down the road, and there's really no need to take action today to fix this.
But it is something I think we need to pay attention to three or four years down the road, is if an opportunity's there, you know, we need to seriously consider refinancing those callable debts and, you know, flattening it out, so you don't have those, that peak, you know, a few years down the road. That's different conversation, different day, but it is something we need to pay attention to moving forward.
And not only that, but I think we need to make sure if we do choose a scenario such as this, that we get the messaging across so that the community member will be able to understand the reasoning and why it makes sense. Because, you know, there's can be a lot of angst over interest only, if they hear interest only loans, it just raises a red flag right now.
It does, but there's a lot of factors that play into that. Obviously, the low interest rates is a big piece of it. I mean, it's unprecedented to where we're at.
And although we always like to make analogies, analogies of your bonds to home mortgage situations, the fact of matter is, most people only own the one home and have the one mortgage, and interest only would be scary there, because you're going to have an increase in your payment at some point down the road pretty dramatically. Whereas at the school district, your overall debt picture is made up of what would be maybe ten to twelve different mortgages, and together, you want to look at the payment structure, how they all come together as one.
Maybe you want to expand a little bit as well for the public about when we did the refinance, you know, refunding, that we did not extend the terms?
Right. Yeah, when we did the refunding, we did not extend the term, we lowered the, there's really a two-part to the strategy that we took place this summer. The first was the refunding, which lowered the payment over the first five years, we put all the savings the first five years, and then no savings in latter years, but we did not extend the term one year at all. And then, when the five million dollars came in, that was used to pay off additional bonds which were set to be paid off in these years. So that's why we were able to bring this down, so taxpayers could experience the relief over the next four to five years. I think it came out to about an average fifty dollars for a three-hundred thousand dollar home per year.
You talk about messaging too. My idea is the simpler the better, and we tried, we did the elementary referendum for forty-two thousand dollars worth of work, but we only did the referendum for thirty-five thousand, fifty-two and forty-two, almost, fifty-two and thirty-five.
Thirty-five million dollar referendum.
And it was not easy to explain to people. You're going to do how much work? And you're asking for how much, well, where's the rest of it come from?
Fund balance. Fund balance.
And that's exactly why we have the problem now.
That's why we have a problem. So we spent years and years building those back up and now getting to the policy we've got, so I want to stick with that. So the simpler the better. So it's an eighteen-million-dollar building, we need X amount of money, and it's going to cost you thirty-three dollars for your four-hundred thousand dollar home. It's much more, much more easy to understand, much more simple.
Question, if we proceed with the referendum in the past, when would we go out to finance and sell the bonds?
Part of that will be a determination with consultation administration, looking at what the market is like during that time. And you could sell, you could sell them all immediately, about two months after the referendum, but in looking at the architectural plans tonight, you don't need a lot of that money until the next year. So if I had to, we're standing here, it was June thirteenth, and the interest rates were pretty much the same way they are now, I would recommend taking a two-part strategy, where you sell up to ten million dollars in two thousand thirteen, the balance in fourteen, because by keeping the borrowings at ten million dollars or under, the tax code provides you the ability to designate the bonds as what we call bank-qualified, which then those purchasers of those bonds, community banks, get an additional tax benefit. And as a result of additional tax benefit, they're willing to accept an even lower interest rate, maybe by as much as forty to fifty basis points, point four to point five percent.
And Bob, assuming that's the scenario we follow, would you anticipate that we would still enjoy the low interest rates that we're now experiencing, and say if it's in late two thousand thirteen or early two thousand fourteen? Now, I say that.
What's going to happen with that fiscal cliff?
Well, but the chairman of the Federal Reserve is going to hold interest rates, he said, until the end of two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, and I began the conversation along with that, I'm glad you started with that. The Federal Reserve said they're going to hold rates until the end of two thousand fourteen, but if I brought the interest rate chart, I don't know if you had it from an older presentation, the Fed has had that policy for four years. So you can, if you had a chart with the Fed funds rate, you'd have this straight line for the last four years, and if I had a chart in municipal bond market, it looked like somebody who's been running a marathon and stopping and running again and stopping, they've been all over the place, because there's a variety of factors that impact the municipal bond market beyond just the federal funds rate. And, you know, during that period of time, I bet the range of interest rates has been three hundred basis points between the high to the low. And there's a lot of factors that come into play in determining where interest rates will be in a month, let alone six months and then twelve months later. And one of those factors is the fiscal cliff. You know, the, there's proposals on the table, one of which would reduce the value of tax exemption by capping deductions for high-income households to no more than twenty-five percent. Well, that means the holdings of municipal bonds are not as valuable to those taxpayers anymore, which could cause rates to come up. And there's even proposals to completely eliminate tax exemption of municipal bonds. And trust me, there's various lobbying groups fighting to make sure that you're able to keep that. Or if anyone, either one of those were to pass that, cause rates to go up, you know, and then there's, you know, the whole impact of Europe, what will the economy be? You know, we have, we've seen some positive news coming out as of late, especially in regards to housing. Positive, it's a relative term, I mean, it's still not very good to what we were used to historically, but it is an upward trend. All those factors could impact the municipal market, cause rates to go up. So what we do, if it was next June, referendum passed, we do an analysis that said, you sell ten million dollars today as bank-qualified, you may be safe fifty basis points, but for the next six months, you're taking interest rate risk on the other eight million. Well, how much would rates have to go up? by to eliminate the benefit of doing the split issuance?
I am curious from board members, and I've heard most of you weigh in here, you know, is there an interest in not, whatever the project is, for instance, in this case, if it's 18.3 million, would, is everybody interested? And we would bond for that capacity if we were to move forward with the project? Anybody disagree with that? I'm just, I'm asking.
No, I don't disagree. I think we have to stick with our fund balance policy. I think we have to maintain our funds and based on the dollar amount here for even a $500,000 home at $42 a year addition to what taxpayers are already paying. And we are all taxpayers. So we're all, you know, also hitting ourselves for an increase to make sure that this building gets completed. You know, I think we've got, we've got a lot, like Jim said, we've got a lot of irons in the fire, the second Jim, not the first Jim.
Yeah, well, the first, you both know, second Jim for me, not the first.
It's a mistake having to sit together and say anything.
But his, but his comment about a lot of irons in the fire and a lot of different things in play right here, especially the pension reform and so on, that local taxing bodies are probably going to get stuck with here. But I'd be in favor of the, with the rates being what they are and so on, to go for the entire 18.3 on that. So that's where I would stand without having, we're not voting tonight. But I do think as we move forward, as we come back to our next meeting, whatever that is, if it's, you know, I want to make sure that we do focus in on the target so, you know, we can, you know, narrow down, keep narrowing down where we're at here. And so, you know, if we are able to drop that number below 18.3, then we, if it's 17.5, whatever we end up doing, you know, then that's the bond amount we would shoot for. I just wanted to make sure. Anybody not comfortable with that? Okay.
Matt?
Personally, oh, go ahead.
Matt, I don't think it makes sense to generate a policy such as we have done and then immediately turn around and say, you know, we're not going to adhere to it. I mean, to me, we did that for a very good, sound financial reason. And I think we would be selling ourselves short, our district short, and not protecting the long-term viability of our school district if we dug into that for this project.
I would like to take worst-case scenario and maybe, you know, finance committee, did you talk more about what if tomorrow we are responsible for the pension? Then how does that affect our thinking here?
Well.
Would it be, is that even silly to say it wouldn't be tomorrow? How soon could it be?
Next fiscal year. I mean, some component. It may not be the full amount. It may not be an $8 million, you know, increase. It may, what, you know, you've looked at, we've seen the different scenarios, proposals, nothing's happened. You know, the one I've seen is a half a percent of that for the next 16 years, which is about a $500,000 increase cumulative every year. And what's $500,000 mean to us in our annual operating budget? It's 10 teachers, it's a program, whatever the program may be, you know, whatever it is. It's class size, raise class size. You know, I mean, this, or we go out to the community for an E-rate increase. You know, that's, that's what it is. If we're going to maintain everything as is, we, we have to have serious conversation about an operating rate increase. And, you know, that's the dilemma that's going on in Springfield. That's the fight. You know, they push it back to us. They all know it's, you know, this is the issue. Either we cut our way out of it, or we ask the taxpayers to increase, you know, the operating rate, which this district has not improved an operating increase since 1987. And, you know, it is very difficult to do that because that is ongoing cumulative. You know, it's much different than a bond issue that has a retirement. You know, it's much, it's forever. You know, an operating increase is pretty significant. And it's a lot more money than, than what we're talking about $25 per year to add an increase on the operating rate. So that's, that's what we're talking about. Or we're talking about cutting and reducing our program, or raising class size, or something of that nature. Those are very difficult decisions. And quite frankly, if this happens, it's going to play out at every board table in the state of Illinois, outside of the state of Chicago.
But I think, maybe you can speak to this too, Jim, that, you know, the fund balance really only plays in in the sense that it gives us a little time to maybe navigate some transition. But really, any significant change in the pension is going to have to result in some significant change of either our revenue or our program. This is a different thing. This is, you know, like buying a house, but not like buying a house. I mean, this is, yeah, yeah, this is an investment in, you know, a property. It, you know, it comes to an end at a certain point. And so it's a different thing to ask the taxpayers for that. What pension might hold for us is a, is a whole different discussion and story. And really, the only way, to my way of thinking that these fund balances play into it is to give us that, that coverage.
A cushion.
A cushion, right.
And that's one-time money. I mean, that would just cover us maybe for a couple of years till we were able to figure something out. It's not going to pay forever, you know. It's not going to happen. So it'll give us a few years, couple of years, to make some decisions on how we want to move forward.
So I don't know if there's other questions about this, the bond specifically. Couple of things. I wanted to make sure that before we left tonight, we were clear about, is there other information that we need from the staff to start to discuss whether we're moving ahead with Jefferson and if so, how are we? And just to refresh everybody, as it's scheduled now, our next meeting is December 12th, if I've got that correct. And December 12th would be the meeting at which we would be actually deliberating, what are we going to do? And then, if that's the only deliberation we need, the vote, assuming we decide to go for a vote on a referendum, we would be voting on January 9th meeting. The actual legal deadline to get your question in is somewhere in the neighborhood of the 22nd.
22nd.
22nd. There were, because there was Martin Luther King birthday, there was a couple of different dates floating around there. It's the 22nd, but the staff would need some time to make sure all the paperwork was done right and all of that. So that's why we really feel like the January 9th meeting is the one to do it at. So that's kind of where we're at. It doesn't leave us a lot of additional time there. So I really want to make sure that if we feel like we either need to get together and talk again before either December 12th or January 9th, we set that date. And then also, or if we just need additional clarifying information, we can start directing staff as to what that might be.
The only clarifying information I would need is on the 12th. I'd be happy to make the decision then as to what to do. But I'd like to know from staff, option one or option two, which to propose. So that's going to, that's the only thing I would need right now.
We're prepared to do that with the Jefferson staff and really narrow in and bring back a, you know, staff recommendation.
I have one thing that I, I'm sorry that I neglected to mention when Patrick was up speaking and you and I talked about this. But the one, the one educational space that is left for us to really consider renovating after we've done all of this and making appropriate for the students to use it as our transition house. And I know, I understand there was some talk about maybe including that. Does it make sense to co-locate that with Jefferson? If it doesn't, then let's just move on, but put that, keep that in our capital development plan for the future. Because I feel like we're taking care of our special kids, you know, from early on, and then we need to finish that off at that transition place. And so I don't want us to lose sight of that.
Let me answer that briefly, and I may let Stephanie comment about it. You know, that did come out in the ECRO survey. There was obviously some pretty significant input that came from parents and what the transition, you know, that's the 18 to 22-year-old group that a lot of them started at Jefferson when they were three and four years old. And so this is, currently, we house that program just for boards' information at Hubble. It's in, it's in a classroom setting there down by, in the gym area off the site. The students have classroom component part of the day, then they're out into the community and to the workplace with job coaches and different things. So the typical environment, the appropriate environment tends to be more of a residential-type setting because there's a lot of life skill involved there. We used to rent a house when we did budget cuts a couple of years ago. We quit renting and we brought it back in-house because we had room at Hubble to do that. Now, we've modified that environment to make it very living oriented. It's got a kitchen and all those things. I do think there's certainly interest there on how we might better serve the needs of those kids. You know, some initial thoughts I had, if we, if this situation here, if this building was going to be part of it, some of my initial thinking was, was to use part of maybe more of my offices in this area right here and maybe transition this space into more of an apartment-like setting for those, for that classroom for those students. However, we're not there. You know, that was an initial thought that we were considering, at least from staff perspective. It has not been part of our planning process with Jefferson at this point. And I, you know, we had some discussion about it. I'll let Stephanie comment on that. It's a completely different need level for those students, for those individuals, and probably would not be the best location at Jefferson. However, we do need to consider that moving forward in our future plans. So Stephanie, you might want to comment on this.
After we received the information from the ECRO survey, I did speak to the staff to look at what type of barriers they were seeing and the concerns that the parents were expressing to them. A few of the things that they had mentioned was the location at Hubble. It wasn't really walkable distance to anything around that area, so that was an area of concern. And then the accessibility, because they are doing the life skill classes, they had accessibility to a washer and oven and stove, but not on a daily basis. So they would have to make special arrangements. So it wasn't the ideal situation, but it was workable. So their ideal situation would be somewhere where it is walkable to store areas or locations. That's why they actually thought that this would actually be a better location. Some of the concerns that they had being at Hubble were the age differences between the middle school students and the students who are aging out of the program at 22. So in the Hubble situation, they were further removed from the middle school population. So some of the questions and concerns that they had from the transition point of view was the age differential between the two students. So definitely, if something was done, it would have to be a separate entrance so that they aren't commingling and that type of thing. So a couple of the areas or things that they were thinking about for consideration wherever it was, was the location so that they could walk to areas and then accessibility to kitchen and life skill type of facilities.
So as a, as a location, it doesn't sound that Jefferson is a good location either because there's nothing that's really walkable from there except for the county playground.
You have the Ulta Food Store and the Target that's close by. They actually thought this area was a nice location because you are close to the downtown.
Downtown, yeah.
So, I mean, and it's residential too. And that's, this area here is heavy residential. And so, you know, that was our initial thoughts that was playing into this, you know, with that other scheme that we abandoned. So, you know, I think it's something we have to continue to pay attention to moving forward, you know, and make sure we consider any option that we have in front of us, you know, to meet, you know, more appropriate needs of the students at the other end of the spectrum, you know. And there are unique needs there too, very unique.
I just wondered, in overall, looking at a referendum, historically, we've always chosen to have one item on a referendum. There was talk when we went for the Hubble referendum that we should do Jefferson at the same time. And we decided our focus should be on Hubble, and our focus should not be on two different things, meaning that one thing we wanted to do with all of the input and all of the analysis and the communication is that we wanted to give it past. I think at this particular point, we have to consider that same thing. Our main focus is on the Jefferson Early Childhood Center, and whether it be transition or be, you know, other areas of improvement to say, well, as long as we're going for 18.31 and we go for 23.3 and do some other things at the same time. I don't think that's a very good thing. I think our focus has been in the past, we've done a great job of referendum deliberations and communications to the community, and been fairly successful at passing referendums because we've talked about the need in the programs. I think we should stick to it this time as well and follow that same, that same path and have us, have us go out for the referendum here and get this, and get this done. And not try to bring anything else into it, try to muddy the waters, you know, of that, of that.
And I wasn't trying to do that. I was just trying to make sure we don't lose sight of it. Don't lose sight of it. That's all. I want to make sure that we understand that the next space that we do is going to be, you know, that we just don't lose sight of the fact that we need to do something for that population of students.
One of the things I mentioned earlier, you know, this whole need for this building as well as Woodland and our facility operation isn't going away. Even though we don't do it as part of this project, we still, I think, as a board and a staff, have to continue to think about that. And I think, you know, if this part of this area here is appropriate for that program, then as we think about what we end up doing with our maintenance facilities and, you know, district office, wherever that may fall, we have to keep that in mind. And think about that as a programming option for that, you know, for that situation. Okay? If there's nothing else for Bob, I'm going to let him sit down unless there's anything else for Frank.
Well, I do, not really a question, but pieces of information that I thought would be valuable for the board to have. I believe we did run a scenario with the 18.3 where we did spread the principal across. Didn't we run a scenario where we spread principal across? Well, maybe that would just be helpful since the question's asked. What would it look like to spread principal? I think it's a question that would be out there. So let's just have board members know what that is, would be my request. And I, you know, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I thought we ran a scenario where we did not extend the term at all, where we put it. No, we didn't do that either. I must have been at another finance at the end.
You know what you're thinking about. You saw, we did share some other options, I believe, where we talked about refinancing and flattening out that peak. That's what you're thinking about. We never put together any other scenario because we were trying to minimize the impact to taxpayers and realize the savings that we just did in the refinance and on sale of the Hubble. So that's, I think we did look at a couple of other scenarios. That was more on trying to flatten out that, you know, this and get more like this out of, but that was three or four years down the road. Maybe that's what you're referring to. If you want to see it.
Well, knowing of just, I think it's a question that would probably pop up and say, what would it be like, you know, how come you're extending the term? Because that's a popular thing not to extend the term of debt. So, so that and, as you said, spreading the principal, just so that we as a board knows what that, know what that would be and we're comfortable being able to give those answers and saying, here's why we decided to backload it and actually have the numbers.
So let me clarify. So you're talking about not extending the term and averaging out the principal interest over-
Two separate scenarios. Let's just do the 18.3 with the principal spread out. Then let's do the 18.3 not extending the term and I guess like it is now, but just adding it on to that last.
And then the other one will be the one we currently have?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll bring that back at the 12th and at least look at it and-
Or if you just show it to, can get it to us ahead of time just so that everybody knows. And then we've got that information.
That is fine. It's easy to do. We can run the scenario.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And then did you, Jim, have?
I don't, we're finished with our discussion tonight, but I just wanted to hypothesize. At the conclusion of the last board meeting, Brian invited us to, if we had any questions with respect to that ECRO report, to convey those to him in an email. And I had some questions, largely on what I call the Washington cohort that was in the ECRO report. There was some dissatisfaction expressed by residents affiliated with Washington School over the district's performance. And I learned in response to that question that it was not, those who responded were not statistically significant with respect to the overall recommendation from ECRO for us to focus on program, child program education center for Jefferson. In the books we've taken. But it did identify a problem that I now understand Brian and staff base are addressing with respect to Washington parents with a concern over the performance of the school and no child look behind it, perhaps with the Franklin boundary issue that's come up and is kind of up in the world service. And so I was glad to hear that that's being addressed. And if we can be of any help in that regard, I'm sure Brian will call upon us to do that.
You know, and one of the things when we did, I did follow up with Dr. Gata and asked him about that. He did look to see if there was, you know, an outline. But again, remember, that's not what the survey was really intended to. It just showed up as- It just showed up as a correlation that showed, you know, where that was. And, and they actually asked us, why do you think that happened? Because we really didn't get at what the root of the issue is. I think from a staff perspective, as you mentioned, we, we have an idea of what's going on there, and I think, you know, Faith and I, plus the principal, Mr. Pilkington are working hard on that, you know, and, and certainly trying to target instructional improvement there. And, and you're right, the other issue, when again, it's not identifiable to be able to measure, was, you know, there was a boundary adjustment that impacted a lot of the parents in that particular area last spring, and I know there was, you know, again, continued to be some unhappiness with that change, and switching middle schools, wasn't the elementary, but it was those kids in that area were moving to a different school. So I think there was some concern there, too. That'd be my thoughts on it. Again, and we're continuing to work and pay attention to that, you know, and it's certainly one of those unintended things that comes up when you do surveys like this.
And I think there's a lot of, you know, misunderstanding about what it really means to be labeled a failing school. And so, I, I mean, I, I think when you have people who maybe don't have schoolchildren, but are living in that Washington boundary area, their perception of what it really means is something, you know, which is, which is what we all don't like so much about no child look behind. So before you get a chance to even address those issues, they're out there, and the feelings are there, and they're deep-seated. I mean, that, I just think, I see Faith nodding her head, you know, so...
And we do have some people sign up for public comments, but before we go to that, do we feel the need for a meeting between now and December 12? Is there anything more that we, as a board, need to discuss? I see violent shaking of heads, no. No more meetings. Okay, that, that is clear.
So we will, you know, before, so on the 12th, then, we will bring back those couple other, you know, those things that Rosemary asked, and we will bring back, you know, thoughts from the Jefferson staff about the concepts there, and certainly want to focus, narrow that discussion at the 12th. That'll be the discussion item on the agenda, to zero in on the project at that, at Jefferson. Okay?
Great. And so we have four people sign up for public comments, and if you haven't commented before, our policy is three minutes. If you can limit yourself to that. And we are interested in everybody's comments. Obviously, since we're at the end of the meeting, we're not going to act on it tonight. We do like to take time to consider everything, and since these are all about Jefferson, I assume you know we are considering everything. So the first person, Dan Wagner.
Testing, one, two, three. Hi, everybody. Dan Wagner, my wife, Lisa, and I have John, Michael, and Annie, who are triplets, and Danny, who's our voters 13 months later. So we have Irish quadruplets. And we, we absolutely love District 200. All four of our, our kids have the privilege of going to Jefferson preschool. And Jefferson is absolutely one of the most phenomenal places you could possibly go to for a family. For our special needs, we have a guy with autism, who because of Jefferson, has gone beyond the autism world, where he's mainstream, and he's doing incredible stuff. We go to continue once a week now, and he golfs, and he's putting 40-foot pipes, and he's doing, he's doing incredible stuff. And I don't want to cry, because I'm very emotional, but Jefferson preschool, and that lady over there, Stephanie, probably even the staff, are phenomenal to have worked and do this for all our kids, and what an incredible value we get. And they did this in a, in a location that's really woefully inadequate, and I want to thank you guys. District 200 board members, thank you so much for taking that challenge to step, stepping up, even though it's a little scary what's going on in Springfield, to say, look, District 200, we are, we are the best, we're going to have the wonderful facilities that we're going to provide for our kids, and if you do it now, if you do it at that early intervention, you're going to have absolute great results. And there's a little guy, John Wagner, in Madison, who, who, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cindy Hummel.
Okay, now we get to follow. And I just want, I don't need the microphone. No, use the mic so it picks up. Oh. Yeah, you're on TV. Oh, I never wanted to be on TV. I, I'm Cindy Hummel. I had three kids in the district, one has graduated, two are still here, and our family has been blessed to not need the services of Jefferson. And I have to say, coming into the meeting, I was very, oh, you can't spend this money. I appreciate everything that you do. I think it's a very thoughtful building, and it's one of those things that if money were no object, I would say absolutely do it in a heartbeat. And quite frankly, I'm very pleased to see the cost is not great on a, you know, it is very, you get a lot of bang for your bucks, I think, in what the architects have put together. The main reason I'm concerned about it is I'm terrified of what's going on in Springfield, or what's not going on in Springfield. We live in a state that is the laughingstock of the nation, and we are going to get slammed with our taxes, and then you add in what's going on in the federal area. So I guess I would say, you know, plan going ahead, because you can't stop your life, you know, waiting for the government to act, because then we'd never get anywhere. But if maybe there's some way it could be worded, or, you know, who knows? A decision may be made for us, depending on what happens before it goes to referendum. But just please take into consideration those of us who are fortunate to not need the services of Jefferson, and I feel like we're getting nickled and dined, and nickled and dined. And, you know, and I, I've sat in the PTA council meetings, and I think the referendum for operating expenses is going to come down. It's like, ooh, we get that thing off our, our plate, Hubble's finally off, and now we get Jefferson, and then that'll go, and then, you know, it's just, it's like in our houses, it's a never-ending stream. So that's, like I said, I'm very pleased, I think you guys have all done a great job with trying to be careful with the community dollars, and just going forward, and not put it out to the voters, and what will be, will be. But thank you for taking, you know, doing a good job with the money.
Thank you very much. Karen Spandica?
I think she's gone.
She's gone. Harold Long?
Appreciate the, sorry about my voice. I appreciate the presentations tonight, and I, I kind of agree with what Rosemary said regarding looking to spread the principal payments over the course of 12 years, wherever it is. I did a back of napkin. We would save approximately about $6 million in interest if we made yearly payments against the principal, the $18 million. I just, you know, I find it hard to swallow, you're spending $18 million for a school, and then you're paying another $8 million for interest on the principal that you're not even going to start paying for 12 years, where most of those kids are going to be in high school. That's just my opinion, and I think for the taxpayers, would only add roughly less than $2 million to start off with per year, and then it would gradually decrease, because the interest payments will go down along with the principal. That's, that's my only comment for tonight.
Thank you very much. And there are no other public comments. That being the case, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Seconded. Moved by Andy, seconded by Barb. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? As I thought, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.